Good evening, everybody. It is approximately 6:02 PM and we are July 30th, 2025. And welcome to the regular board meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. In our favor. I'm going to say, I'm in your text.
Your mic is on.
I know it's actually where you have to vacate.
Okay. No, say one. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. In our favor. I'm going to say, I'm in your text.
Ready?
Your mic is on. Your mic. I know it's actually where you have to vacate.
Okay. You don't say one. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. It is approximately 6:02 PM and we are July 30th, 2025. And welcome to the regular board meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Thank you. Esteban Rangel.
Present.
Ernestina Atita Vela.
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos.
Present.
Erica Benavides Garcia.
Present.
Mercurio Martinez.
Present.
Adriana Alexander.
Present.
Karina Lisondo.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum and I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Adriana Alexander for her absence.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A second. There's a motion by Ms. Ramos, second by Ms. Benavides. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Just a reminder to board members, please, if you will not be attending a board meeting, if you could notify the chair or the secretary so we could be able to have it on note. Thank you. With that being said, can we please stand? Ms. Benavides, can you say the prayer? And Judge Martinez, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Loving God, we come before you seeking your guidance and wisdom as we begin this board meeting. We ask that you grant us clarity of mind, discernment in our decisions, and a spirit of collaboration as we work together for the betterment of our organization. Help us to set aside personal agendas and focus on what is best for all involved. May your presence be felt in our discussions and may your will be done in our decisions. We offer this meeting to you, trusting your grace and guidance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Benavides and Judge Martinez. I was notified that there's no public testimony right now. Next item is item number four, recognitions and introductions by Mr. Ruben Villarreal. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, board. President Rangel, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Ramirez, vice presidents, faculty staff, and distinguished guests. My name is Ruben Villarreal, Public Information Officer for Laredo College. It is my privilege to present today's recognitions and introduce personnel updates that reflect our college's continued growth and excellence. We begin with Agenda Item 4A. Emergency Medical Services Program receives continued accreditation. We are pleased to announce that the Emergency Medical Services Program has been granted continuing accreditation by the Commission of Accreditation of Allied Health Education Programs effective July 16, 2025. This decision was based on the recommendation of the Committee on Accreditation of Educational Programs for the Emergency Medical Services professions. The program met all accreditation standards with no areas of non-compliance identified, and the next comprehensive evaluation is scheduled for 2030. The review was conducted using the 2015 standards and guidelines for EMS education programs. This recognition reflects our continued commitment to excellence in health professions education and the delivery of high-quality, standards-based training for future emergency medical professionals. We thank the faculty, staff, and administration for their commitment and passion in driving this success. In addition, we appreciate Mr. Manuel Ramirez's leadership in guiding the EMS program to success. And a pause to give them a round of applause.
Congratulations.
And we do want to recognize the individuals that are responsible. Manuel Ramirez, the professor of EMS program and program director. Mauro Ramon, Assistant Professor of EMS Program. Gregorio Salas, Assistant Professor of EMS Program. Herbert Serna, EMS instructor, lab coordinator. Vicente Mancha, EMS instructor. And adjunct faculty Stephen Gonzalez and Amanda Molyneux. And of course, and our thanks to Dr. Esmeralda Vargas, Dean of Health Sciences.
Congratulations.
You want them up front, Randy? Yep. We can have everybody come to the front for a picture, please?
If we can.
Dr. Tejerina and Dr. Hernandez, will you join us for the photo, please? Yes. 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 Next, we go back to Agenda Item 4B, Student Recognition of Ms. Karen Inohosa. We'd like to take a moment to recognize the accomplishments of one of We'd like to take a moment to recognize the accomplishments of one of Laredo College's exceptional recent graduates, Karen Inohosa. Karen graduated this past spring and will be transferring to the University of Texas at Austin this fall. She was also accepted to Texas A&amp;M, Texas State, LSU, and UTSA. This is a testament to her academic excellence and determination. This summer, Karen is serving as an intern for Senator Judith Zaffarini, a proud Laredo College alumni and alumna and the first woman dean of the Texas Senate. Karen's journey toward this opportunity began during Laredo College's visit to the state Capitol for Community College Day, where she engaged with the Senator's staff and expressed her interest in public service. While at Laredo College, Karen served as a Senator for the Student Government Association, President of Phi Theta Kappa, and Treasurer for the Palomino Empire Dance Team. Through her leadership, service, and involvement, she exemplifies the values and potential of our student body. Karen aspires to attend law school and become an attorney. We're incredibly proud of her accomplishments and look forward to all that she's going to continue to achieve. Congratulations, Karen Inohosa. Karen was also interviewed for Laredo College Student Stories, which you can find on the Laredo College YouTube channel. You're done. Thank you for your time and congratulations once again to all who were recognized and to our colleagues beginning new chapters within the college.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Before I continue with Item 5, I do want to recognize our Texas Assessor Collector, Ms. Patricia Barrera, for being here. Thank you, ma'am. Item number 5, Faculty Advisory, Dr. Martinez.
Honorable Trustees, President Ramirez, members of the audience. Well, I, what a difference a few months makes because, well, I have really nothing substantial to report to you except that the faculty does acknowledge that a law was passed that now requires a different set of parameters for establishing a faculty senate, which first will include, I guess, revamping it. I'm trying to find a nice euphemism for it. But I'll be honest with you, I have not been able to speak to the entire faculty body because, well, most of them are in summer break. The few that I have spoken to do wish that some type of Faculty Advisory Council or Senate continues so we can assist. We've always been an advisory committee only. I mean, it's nothing, nothing has changed, you know? So we would like to continue in that capacity at your discretion. So that's all I have to say and look forward to your decision. That having been said, I do want to say that if the Board so wishes to reestablish a faculty senate or advisory committee, we would start from scratch. I would meet with the previous two Faculty Senate Presidents and gain their, you know, their knowledge and expertise. And most probably what would happen is we would have to have a new set of elections that would take us all the way through maybe October. So we wouldn't have a, if you wish so, we wouldn't really have a new Faculty Advisory Committee until probably October. So that's just, it's not going to happen like from one meeting to the next. So it'll, it'll take a little bit of time and so forth. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Gil. I do want to mention, thank you for what you've done, you know? I know this is kind of ending, Dr. Martinez, but I know we do have a couple of items to discuss that, you know, particular situation. But I do want to thank you and everybody that participates in the Faculty Senate. You know, we really do appreciate you all. Thank you. With that being said, we're going to move to Item 6, Board Committee Reports. Item 6A, the Finance and Audit Committee, Ms. Ernestina Atita Vela.
Yes, we met on Tuesday at noon, and it was a very productive meeting and very informative also. The financial report in our Quarterly Investment Report was presented to us by Mr. Cesar Vela and Ms. Jamie Hobbs, and we're looking really good. We really are, up until now, and with all of our ups and downs, but we are looking okay. One of the, several of the things that were mentioned is the approval of a tomage table. And it's really interesting. It's for the Science Department. And this particular table is used to expose our students to cadivers. And I, you know, I thought maybe that was in the Health Science, but no, it's in the Science. So that's, I'd love to see it. That would be, that's something very interesting. Another one was the approval of a contract for our landscaping. And we had two people bid for it. And actually, there was three companies that bid, and Mr. Torres went ahead and got the bid for the landscaping. Apparently, he's been with us and has done a very good job for a while, for several years. We also had the approval of an air compressor for our diesel shop expansion. All of us are very aware of the big expansion that we have at the South with our diesel program. And this was, this is a new base that's actually needed out there. That's not the only thing that's needed out there, where there's a couple of other things that are needed. We also, there's an approval for a purchase of a license for the Respondus Lockdown Browser, which is, again, important, especially for online courses and even regular, you know, face-to-face courses when they take a test online. And this supposedly is supposed to catch people cheating. I don't know how it works, but it sounds interesting. Again, back at the Transportation Technology Department, there's five tractors that we need for the expansion of the diesel program. And this, this money comes from our new initiatives, so we don't have to worry about that. There's an approval for a purchase of the Illusion Journey Software. And this pretty much has to do with a continuing ed program and incorporates them into what we already have. That has, it's pretty neat, this new program that we're using. There's approval for purchase of furniture for the Forensic Science Program. And we were informed of how many students are extremely interested in this program. And I mentioned, I don't know if this is true or not, I think it has to do with all those TV programs, Forensic Files and everything. Everybody wants to go into that. All right. The other is the approval of a purchase table for the De La Garza, which includes a podium, and this is a table for us here. So it's going to be a lot nicer, and I don't think we'll be able to fall. We won't have that problem falling. We have, we have the approval of the Argo Software License Agreement and Maintenance Extension and the approval of the College, the Laredo College Police Dispatch consoles, which we all know that we definitely need to help them. We need to have them up to date on everything. And that's pretty much all that we covered, which is, any questions or any comments?
Thank you, Ms. Vela.
Thank you.
Item, we're going to continue with Item 6B, Program and Policy Committee Report. Ms. Ramos?
Thank you. Brief synopsis of our Program and Policy Meeting that took place Tuesday, July 29. We had all committee members present. I thank you for your participation. And regarding the following items on the agenda, I will summarize and a full explanation by Dr. Marisela Tijerina and Mr. Rusty Muir will be provided when the Agenda Item is presented. As far as CAK Local Appropriations and Revenue Sources Investments will appear in the Consent Agenda for the indicated minor changes visible in your board documents. Approval of modifications to the Laredo College Board Policy, CAK Local Appropriations and Revenue Sources Investment, and it's located in your packet. Discussion on the provisions of the Texas Senate Bill 37 was discussed with the committee. The Board will hear from Dr. Tijerina and Mr. Muir on some of the most pressing items that require immediate board attention. In addition, the committee discussed the probability of having a board workshop in the month of August to review the other provisions of Senate Bill 37 that directly relate to the Board. A list of new trainings for Board members was requested of Dr. Tijerina via email. She will be sending those shortly. And finally, the committee reviewed DMC Local Termination of Employment Reduction in Force and presented the changes to be considered to this policy. This Agenda Item will be discussed in executive session as well as the proposed policy modifications. I thank you in advance for participating in the Program and Policy Committee Meeting, and I look forward to the next one where we will be continuing to discuss the Texas Senate Bill 37. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Moving on, Item 7, informational items. We're going to go ahead and start with 7A, Student Success Report. I know Mr. Diazola is not present today, so I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Trevino.
There we go. Good evening, Board Members, President Ramirez, colleagues, administration. Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management, for the record. And I will be presenting to you this evening an enrollment update. I am happy to report that this is almost a final enrollment update because our summer enrollment, which we will be covering shortly, certification is due this Friday. So what you're seeing here is our enrollment report timeline. Again, this is the countdown leading to the first class day of the Fall 2025 semester, which is scheduled to begin on August 18th. We are almost there. We first have to wrap up Summer Session 2, which ends on August the 6th and 7th and culminates officially with the commencement ceremony on August the 8th. We'll cover that one as well. But let me talk a little bit about Summer 1. So Summer 1 is looking very similar from 2025 to 2024. Although five students, I am happy to report an increase. So we'll continue with a streak of increases here. We did see an increase of students. Those mostly came from our regular student population, which is a great thing. That is something that we've been trying to focus on, ensuring that we grow our regular student population at the same rate that obviously dual enrollment is growing. We want to make sure that both student populations remain healthy. The numbers that you're seeing on here, 1,821 students were regular students. 1,157 students were dual enrollment students for a total enrollment of 3,116. The little bubbles that you see on there are students in their respective areas that were only enrolled for Maymester. As a reminder, Maymester does get counted in the Summer 1 enrollment. So in this case, out of the 3,116 total enrollment, 138 were only here for Maymester. Okay? Questions on Summer 1? Again, almost final because we certify that on Friday. Summer 2, moving on to Summer 2, which is the semester we are currently in. We did do see another enrollment increase, a little bit healthier here with 109 students or a 6% increase in enrollment compared to last Summer 2. We are at 1,823 total enrollment. Again, a healthy increase in the regular student population at 1,517 students and the dual enrollment students at 306. These numbers do not officially become certifiable until early September. So we won't have final numbers for Summer 2 until later into the fall. Questions with Summer? Moving on to Fall, please take a breath. It's not as bad as it looks. There's an explanation to it. What you're seeing on here is our Fall to Fall Enrollment. Let me start by clarifying that what you're seeing for Fall 2024 is the final Fall Enrollment Number. This includes the second eight-week students, which we haven't even started touching for this coming fall. Last year, we did see an enrollment of 11,027 students. This year, we are at 4,248 students. But we do have a very healthy dual enrollment projection of hitting over the 6,000 student enrollment mark. So if we do remain on that streak and if we do remain on that goal, that is going to be an impressive accomplishment for the dual enrollment and everybody involved in the team. We do not have any dual enrollment students registered yet, and that is because the dual enrollment rosters from our district partners are not due till August 1st. So starting Friday, probably over the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, we will start seeing some enrollment happening for dual enrollment as we begin to receive rosters. Overall, in comparison, as of right now, there is a difference of 6,777 students or 61.46% difference from right now to be at par with Fall 2024, out of which 1,581 are regular students. So again, trying to focus on the difference of students dual and regular, that leaves us pretty much with 121 students, regular students, to register every day for the next 13 days to be at par of where we were last year. Now again, this would be hypothetical because this includes the second eight weeks of enrollment. If we're looking at the overall enrollment in 13 days of registration, we would be needing 521 students per day of both dual and regular to meet the 11,027 of last year. However, the little post-it that you see there, again, it's that clarification. I did want to remind you that last year for Fall 2024, we had 987 students who started and enrolled for the second eight weeks. So if we look at the numbers, again, talking about the 6,077 that were pending to register, let's pretend 6,000 of those are dual enrollment. That leaves us with a deficit of 777, and if, out of which 987 may start in the second eight weeks, technically, we're looking at a projection of an increase of 210 students of enrollment. Okay? Questions here?
Ms. Ramos, go ahead.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question. Your dual enrollment, duels are enrolled at the beginning of semester.
Yes.
So between the semester, do you see an increase or a decrease in the number of students that withdraw? Or can they withdraw from dual enrollment? And/or can they, they're withdrawing from the regular courses, right? So do you see, like, you see these numbers? These are the numbers that we finished off last year. Was there an increase or a decrease in the number of students that were dropping classes?
We do have an identifier to be able to give you the exact number of students that withdraw from the start of the semester forward. I don't remember it from on top of my head. I can definitely do a comparison for you on withdrawals. But, but I am happy to report that due to the financial aid pelvic calculation date, which is where the students lock their financial aid, it gives the students a very small window to actually drop their courses. Our advisors at the Registrar's Office, at the Advising Center, they are all talking to the student to ensure, in addition to the faculty, everybody. It's just a team effort to ensure the student pulls through in their, in their enrollment. This year, during orientation as well, we are communicating to the student. We are informing the students the importance of completing their coursework because of the financial aid requirements, the PACE requirement. We give them a very simple example. The federal law requires 67% completion of the enrollment of your classes. If a student is enrolled for four classes, that weighs 25% each. If you drop one class, you're at 75% completion. If you fail the second class, you're at 50% completion. That puts you in financial warning.
Yes.
So we're communicating that ahead of time to try to diminish the number of students dropping or withdrawing their courses.
And with the implementation of the eight-week courses, we're having like the two semesters in one semester like it used to be. Do you see an increase in, of course, the numbers reflect that, right? But do you see an increase in motivation and also making sure they meet the deadlines, right? So that they're not waiting till the last minute? Because you're on the front line, so you get to see, you know, the fluidity of the registration and what happens, right? So do you, do you agree that there has been an increase in kind of being responsible and making sure you get those classes in, right? So?
Definitely. So actually, this next slide kind of alludes to, to your question here. I did want to, after the scare of the bar graph right there, I did want to bring to you an actual to-date enrollment report. So this is actually July 30th of 2024 versus July 30th of 2025. So this is to-date. So last year, we were at 4,526 students enrolled, regular students enrolled. Again, this does not have dual enrollment, other than the two students here who are coming on their own. coming on their own for dual credit, but other than that, we had not yet enrolled dual enrollment students. This year, we're at 4,257, putting us behind 267, 269 students from where we were today last year. Now, in, to answer your question a little bit more regarding deadlines, we have been a lot more active in our summer, what we call our summer melt recruiting efforts, calling students to submit their bacterial meningitis vaccine, to submit their financial aid documents. The Office of Student Life at orientation has been very active as well in reminding students to bring documents. So again, this is our first year that we're truly going through a full enrollment cycle where all of these reminders are in place and all of this information continues to be shared. So hopefully, next year, we'll have a much healthier view of the, of the situation.
It's good, looks good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from any Board members? No? Go ahead.
So moving on from enrollment, if there's no other questions regarding numbers, I did want to give a commencement update. We do have Summer 2025 Commencement Ceremony scheduled for Friday, August the 8th, here at the Fort Macintosh Campus at the Guadalupe Villia Martinez Fine Arts Theater, the MFA. There will be two ceremonies, a morning ceremony and an afternoon ceremony. The morning ceremony does have our BESORGO students, actually, both ceremonies have bachelor graduates. The morning one has BESORGO, the Associate of Arts and the Associate of Science. The ceremony starts promptly at 9 o'clock. Students will be, students, family and guests will be able to start coming into the MFA at 8:00 in the morning. The afternoon ceremony is the Bachelors of Science in Nursing, the AAS and the Certificates. The ceremony starts promptly at 1:00, and the doors open to the public and to the guests at 12 noon. Please note, the ceremony will not require tickets to come in. We did try that last year, and there were a couple of empty seats there. We just want to make sure it's a first come, first served, and all students get to bring their guest to the ceremony. What you're seeing next are the actual numbers that we should, we hope to be expecting at the ceremony. On the left, my left-hand side, your left-hand side too, then is the number of candidates and then versus the number of participants at the ceremony. So in the morning ceremony, we should be expecting about 120 students to participate. In the afternoon ceremony, about 130 students to participate. Any questions?
Any questions, Board members? No? Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
Moving on, Item 7B, National Association of Latino, Latino-Elected and Appointed Officials Annual Conference. I will be reporting on that. I went ahead and I was privileged to go to the Naleo Conference. It was hosted in Atlanta. It was a very, very interesting conference. I was talking to Ms. Ramos. A lot of the stuff, it was hosted by Coca-Cola, that was the main sponsor. So the, a lot of the stuff that was pretty much coming up, and I'll, I'll put a comment at the end, a lot of the stuff that was coming up is all the changes that our president is currently doing and how it's affecting a lot of our Latino community from, you know, immigration to education, health, energy, trade, foreign policy. Every, every session that I went to, it had a target of any type of bill that he's currently doing or any, or he wants to undo. It was very, very interesting. One of the other ones that I took was birthright citizenship, how it, how they want to do away with that, it's, it's interesting. But another thing that they were also talking about was mental health for immigration. That was a big topic, especially because of kids are being left without parents or they're being dragged to, no, no, I want to say dragged, they're being, their parents are being told that they need to leave and the kids are born here, you know, and how it's affecting them and how the mental health for, for those, for those students was, was pretty, pretty bad. Another one that I also took was homeowner, homeownership for Latinos. They want to come up with, with a program of how they can help. We are a community that is very high on not being homeowners, so which, which is not shocking, but yes. So they want to go ahead and do that. They're partnering up with the Gates Foundation and with Wells Fargo on, on that, on that, on that committee. The last, I went ahead and I met somebody that, Jerry Gonzalez, he's a Laredoan, and he, I didn't know, he, he, he works for Naleo and it was very, he was kind of like looking for me. He told me, I was, I was looking for you and last year in Vegas, but you didn't go. I said, no. So he was looking for me on this one to congratulate me and, and, you know, exchanged words and everything. But the, the thing that I kind of wanted to touch was, you know, what, what Dr. Gil mentioned in the board meeting and, and Ella is, is I think, I think it's, it's very important that Latinos come out to vote, you know, and we need to be making sure that we call our people, our congressmen, our, our state reps, our senators, and tell them how much this is affecting. And, and he had a really good point, you know, of we have to come out to vote. It's very, very important. We just don't vote. But, but it was all, overall, it was very interesting to see a lot of Latinos that are elected or appointed and, and what they're doing in their own, in their own realms. So with that being said, that's, that's kind of like my report on, on the conference. So any questions? No? Thank you. So Items 7C, Foreign Trade Zone, the Dr. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. This is to inform you that we received a letter of request or letter of intent from, from Mr. Federico Schafler, from, he's the Foreign Trade Administrator for the City of Laredo, requesting a designation of usage-driven FTZ and activation of 1,858 square feet, of which 1,858 square feet would be inside a warehouse and dedicating or asking us to dedicate that space as a, a trade zone. The entire space is at 301 Grand Central Boulevard in Laredo, Texas, and the company name is Camilli Forwarding, Inc. The entire area that they are going to encompass is 3.45 acres, but they're only asking for a small portion of that to be part of the free trade zone exemption. The letter was our concurrence as required by the policy that you all passed. I did reply and I did send the letter of concurrence and acceptance, and so this is just to notify you that we received this request.
Okay. Any questions on that? No? And again, this is just not an action item, it's just an informational item from Dr. Ramirez. Item 8, Consent Agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the entire consent agenda, 8A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O. Second.
There is a motion and there, by Ms. Ramos, I mean, by Ms. Leando, and there's a second by Ms. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. And just, Dr. Ramirez made a note, I'm, I'm just going to mention here on 8A, it's just the regular board, the regular board meeting in May 29, 2025, and the board workshop June 25, 2025.
You have to approve them.
And we, I asked, but we did approve.
We did?
Yeah. So.
Just making sure.
Okay. Item 9, Discussion and Possible Action. I'm going to read the full item and then I'm, I'm, we'll make two different motions at the end. Discussion and possible action concerning the following matters related to appraisal roles and tax rates. Mr. Cesar Vela and Ms. Patricia Barrera. 9A1, Approval of the 2025 Certification of the Appraisal Role. 9A2, Approval of the Anticipated Collection for the 2025 of 100%. Ms. Vela, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ramirez, guests. For the record, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration. Tonight, Board Members, we have presented to you a copy of the 2025 Certified Appraisal Roles along with the anticipated collections for 2025. Tonight, we, we have Ms. Patricia Barrera, Webb County Tax Assessor Collector, who will be presenting the information on, on both the appraisal role and the anticipated collection. So at this point, I'll defer to Ms. Barrera.
Thank you, Ms. Vela and Ms. Barrera. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Patricia Barrera. I am the Tax Assessor Collector for Laredo College. And first of all, the first item is the certification of the appraise, the certified tax role values. What we get from the, is what, from the records from the appraisal district, we're now converting them into the certified tax role values. Just for your record, we have 96,000, 96,200 accounts, and that's, that's what we're going to be taxing, and that's just for the record, and.
Just, Ms. Barrera, really quick, I'm sorry, just for the, because you're doing, putting on the record, it's 98,200.
Say 98, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
98.
Just for, just for the record.
I have my glasses with me.
Yes.
The numbers are small. I did write it over here, 98,200.
It's okay, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, the real property, we have 11,488,267,752. The improvements are 18,907,133,256. The personal is, personal property is 3,236,729,562. And the minerals value are 1,867,330. So your total market value is 33,633,000,997,900. On your exemption values, these are, will be the full exemption or the real personal and mineral, we're going to be deducting 4,722,534,213. On your agricultural exemptions, it will be deducting 267,000,838,561. On your free port exemptions, that, the total is 637,379,305. On your pollution control, that's 70,350. On your homestead cap loss, it's 178,234,789. On your circuit breaker cap loss, that's something new. I imagine it has to do with electricity, maybe, I don't know where, but we're now adding that or subtracting that. And that's 550,144,937. On your partial exemptions, A, the over 65 homesteads, the loss is 363,013,917. On disabled property or disabled people on their homestead or, yeah, on their homestead On your disabled veterans on their homestead is 270,656,141. On your mass, that's your surviving spouses, and that should be just two S, not three S. And that total is 377,603. Your solar exemptions are 912,936. Your LIH, and that has to do with housing, and that's 8, 8 million, 800, 8 million dollars?
Yes.
Zero, 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 zero. And the other is FRSS, again, surviving spouse, is 307,380. Your total exemptions are 7,255,868,604. So your total net taxable value after deducting the exemptions is 26,608,129,296. Your limited tax value based on these 98,200 accounts is a, it's a minus 2,314,703. So your pre-adjusted taxable value will be based on 24,576,691,593. So from there, between Mr. Vela and his team and our team, we will be coming down with your, the no new revenue and then your, whatever other value if you want to go a little higher than that. So we'll be coming back to you with that. The next report that I have to give you is the certification of the excess collection values. And before I start reading that, I'd like to just give you some numbers. On the excess collection for Laredo College, we anticipated 10,646,538. We actually collected 10,342,99. So we had an excess of 612,239 collection, which if you divide it, it comes, we actually collected 101 for the year 2024. And I hope that '25 will be as profitable as it was in '24. So now we'll read the certification that you all need to vote and approve. I, Patricia I Barrera, Webb County Tax Assessor Collector, as tax collector for Laredo College, hereby certify that the excess collections for debt service, the interest and sinking fund for the taxable year of 2024 is 612,239 as of June 30, 2025, and said amount is true and correct. I further certify that the anticipated collection rate for the tax year 2025 is 100%. This certification is submitted to the Board of Directors of Laredo College by the duly designated officer who will prepare the 2025 tax rate calculation worksheets. And the board needs to vote on that, actually.
Yes, ma'am, we will. Question, Ms. Ramos, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that 2025 certification of the appraisal role as presented by Ms. Barrera.
There's a motion for Item 8, 1, 9A1.
I second it.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos, a second by Ms. Vela. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
I do have a question.
Okay, before, before we make a motion, Judge, before we vote, go ahead, Judge.
The one thing that I'd like to ask is in reference to Ms. Patricia, this is the full exemptions dealing with real, personal and minerals, we're looking at 4 billion dollars. Excuse me, thank you so much. We're looking at 4 billion, 4.7 billion dollars. These, what, what is the reason for, for exemptions?
That exemption? It would be like your churches, we still give them a value, your buildings, your churches, schools, anything that we cannot tax.
Religious organizations and things of that nature.
We still count them in as part of, of what's in, in, in.
Okay, okay, that answers my question.
But it also includes schools and anything dealing with that, governmental buildings, all of that.
I understand.
Housing also, you also have some housing that fall under, under that category. I think like Danny's, yeah, Valdez, there's a lot of those that, that help the housing of the elderly that are, that don't have homes and they provide housing for.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Patricia. I, I wondered about it. Thank you. That answers my, my, my question. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Yes, sir. Any other comments? No? I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward for a very profitable year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the following motion to approve the anticipated collections for 2025 of 100%.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos to approve 9A2. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a second by Ms. Benavides. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barrera, and thank you, Ms. Vela, for that report. We're moving on. 9B, Approval of Designated Non-Business Days for Open Records Request. I know Ms. Dr. Deasola's absent also. Okay, Andrea Lopez will be presenting. Ms. Lopez, go ahead.
Good evening, Board Members, President Ramirez, executives and guests. For the record, my name is Andrea Lopez, and I am the AVP of Compliance, and I will be presenting on behalf of Dr. David Adiasola. Tonight, the college is requesting Board of Tonight, the college is requesting board approval to formally designate specific non-business days for the purpose of processing open records requests. Under the Texas Public Information Act, the college must provide a response to open record requests within ten business days. Generally, a business day is identified as any day that is not a Saturday, Sunday, national holiday, or state holiday. The law does allow institutions to designate up to ten non-business days per calendar year that do not count toward the ten-day response timeline. This designation helps account for periods when the college is closed or operating with limited administrative capacity such as during winter break or spring break. This ensures compliance with the law while also allowing our staff appropriate time to resume operations. The proposed non-business days are aligned with the institutional calendar to minimize disruption and maintain transparency in handling requests, and those dates are included in your meeting materials and are as follows. November twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-five, three days; December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, one day; December twenty-ninth through the thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five, three days; and March eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-six, also three days. If approved, these dates will be published on the college website as required. Does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Uh, Ms. Newsom, go ahead.
No, Ms. Elizondo.
Ah, Ms. Elizondo, sorry.
Did I hear correctly, so this is going to give additional ten days?
The, the law does allow for institutions, um, to have, to designate ten non-business days, so anything that's not a Sunday or a Saturday or already a, a federal holiday or state holiday, those we're not required to provide or to count in our response timeline. Um, so through the, by the law, we are allowed to designate ten additional non-business days.
We're not consecutive.
No, they don't need to be consecutive, no. It's at the discretion of the institution.
Is there any other comment? No? Can I hear a motion to approve? There's a motion by Ms. Bella and there's a second by Ms. Leando, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against?
Aye.
Ms. Elizondo is against. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, item nine C, ratification of Laredo College Board of Trustees letters, letter of support for the Aspen President and Trustee collaboration. That, I'll just report real quick and then I'll allow, uh, Dr. Ramirez. Yeah, I'll allow Dr. Ramirez to elaborate a little bit. As you all know, we're going through, through this Aspen, uh, program to see if we are selected and everything. Uh, the college went ahead and, and typed up a, a letter for, for us to send off. I did get notification from Ms. Bocanegra that the letter was sent off and was received uh, by the organization, so that's a good thing. So, Dr. Ramirez, anything you want to add?
So, uh, the Laredo College Board of Trustees, uh, was actually invited to apply, uh, to this Aspen program, uh, as a, um, it, it's a, it's a, the, the next iteration of, of where, where I am right now in the Aspen program, which finishes this fall. But through Texas Association of Community Colleges, they've partnered with Aspen and asked a certain number of community colleges to apply, and they selected, um, eight, I believe it's eight, community colleges in Texas to participate in the President's and Trustees Aspen, uh, Institute for this coming year. And so part of the requirement with our, uh, acceptance, since we were selected, was to have a formal letter signed by the President of the, of the Board of Trustees, accepting the nomination and accepting, uh, the selection. And so that letter was prepared and, uh, submitted with his signature, and they have received the, uh, the letter.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez, any questions? No? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. uh, Ms. Leando and a second by Ms. Benavides, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes, thank you. Item nine D, discuss provisions of the, of the Texas Senate Bill Thirty-Seven, requiring abolishment of the Faculty Senate in its current form, act as needed to the form, to reform a new faculty representative organization and change Laredo College Board Policy, BGC Local and Board Record, Record Regulations, BD Regulation, Dr. Tijerina and Mr. Muir.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Ramirez, guests, administrators, colleagues. Marisol Rodriguez Tijerina, Provost, Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'm going to provide a brief overview. Senate Bill Thirty-Seven is very lengthy, so I'm trying to highlight the, the main areas, and then accordance to the timelines, we'll start separating the details. Um, but right now, the most pressing, uh, timeline for us concerns Faculty Senate as what Dr. Martinez mentioned earlier. So the purpose is to inform you about key legislative changes impacting governance, operations and workforce in higher education institutions. Senate Bill, uh, Thirty-Seven consists of the board having oversight over curriculum, routine reviews for alignment with workforce needs, faculty governance, establishment of the new faculty council in accordance with Senate Bill Thirty-Seven. And it's like I mentioned at program policy, we would not be here if it wasn't for Senate Bill Thirty-Seven. We are obviously working collaboratively with our current Faculty Senate, but there are a lot of rules here on how it needs to be restructured. Um, and because of that, we have to change our constitution, we have to change in how the membership is, is voted on, and, and again, it's all in accordance to Senate Bill Thirty-Seven, which I'll explain in just a bit. There is a component of board trainings, I think, um, I outline about twelve trainings now that, that the board members will be required to attend in accordance to this law. And, um, then the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board will create an office of an abutment, and then that's going to be created to address any internal grievances or complaints. So these are the main areas of Senate Bill Thirty-Seven, and again, we'll go into the details as the timeline comes around, but pretty much what the board must do in each of these key areas is you will have the final authority to approve, deny any key actions when it comes to general education curriculum, program reviews, and any new hires, um, when it involves administration, from deans, vice presidents, associate provost, provost, and of course, president. We're already currently doing that, right? Um, the faculty governance, reconstitute or ratify senate, uh, or councils, and abolish if needed. So because we're not in compliance with Senate Bill Thirty-Seven right now, we have to abolish it, which is the next agenda item. And then that needs to be done by September first of two thousand twenty-five, and we have to submit a report to the state that we did this. Then there, the state is giving us all the way till January of two thousand twenty-six to reconstitute it. So like Dr. Martinez mentioned, we're really aiming to come back in October and say, here's the membership, here's the new constitution, here is everything that we need in accordance to this law, so that way they can move a, as quickly as possible. Um, next one is curriculum reviews, oh, sorry, curriculum reviews. Um, it's the, to oversee, certify and document a five-year review cycle. Just so you'll know, in the Division of Academic Affairs, we do this on a yearly basis. So we're already doing this, but now we have to present it every five years to the board. Um, the hiring oversight, as I mentioned earlier, there has to be a state, uh, report that we submit, um, on an annual basis, and then the Office of Abutment that will respond to complaints, avoid, avoid funding or legal sanctions, and lastly, the trustee training, which is to complete, certify and document all mandated trainings. So the implications is to conduct regular curriculum evaluations, ensure faculty involvement in the governance, comply with trustee training requirements, and address issues raised through the THCB abutment's office. Any questions?
Um, before I, I, I ask ques, allow questions, um, I, I want to thank you for the presentation, Dr. Tijerina, because I think it's important to, to note that it's not something that's coming from either the Faculty Senate or administration of wanting to do this. Uh, it's just a new law that passed and we have to, we have to comply. I did talk to Dr. Ramirez about this, I had a, a lengthy conversation about it. Um, she had already moved, as soon as it passed, she had already moved on speaking to our, our Senator, um, but unfortunately, it passed, so, um, we have to comply. So I'm, I'm very happy that you are reporting on this and that you're notifying us that it's not something coming from the Faculty Senator, you guys, you know, so, yeah. Um, any questions from any, uh, go ahead, Ms. Bella.
I, I just have a comment. Um, the training, this is something that's going to be very important, and in the past, I think we were required to take maybe three courses or three training section four, and now it's up to twelve. So, um, this is a lot of extra work for all of us, so we need to be prepared for that. And then also, the abutment, we're going to have to be very careful in everything we do, everything we say, because if anybody, anybody at all turns us in, or if they see anything on social media, et cetera, we are responsible and we can be, what, where do I want to use?
Investigate.
Investigated. So we've got to be very, very careful as a board member to cross all our Ts and dot all our Is.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bella. Uh, Ms. Ramos and then Judge Martinez, go ahead.
I, I want to thank you also for the presentation, and Mr. Muir, I know you're going to speak a little bit more about it, but I do want to bring attention to one person that is going to be by our side, Ms. Bocanegra, thank you in advance for helping us with this because you are going to, you know, text us, call us, let us know, remind us. And I, I want to, um, I want to pledge my full faith and support to my board members, uh, that we are going to get through this, we're going to work it, and we're going to comply, and we're going to do it with a smile, and we are going to do what we've always done, is the right thing. And we're going to follow through. So, um, am I scared, am I concerned, am I worried? Really not, because I feel like, I, I need to remind the public, uh, because this is, uh, this is a, a meeting that's, uh, uh, broadcasted on, online, is that we don't get paid for being board members, yet we are here diligently, um, serving our community, and, and I fully enjoy it, I know that all of us here would not be here if we didn't enjoy doing what we do. And, and it's a love and a passion that we have for our community. And so, I, I, again, I want to tell my fellow board members that, uh, first of all, thank administration, thank Ms. Bocanegra for all the assistance and help that she's given us up to right now and will continue to give us, and to Dr. Ramirez, but most importantly, to our board members. Uh, together, we can support each other, together we can get through this, and together we can look at this as, as another challenge that we're going to meet, and we're going to be, um, we're going to excel at this. So thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for giving the opportunity to mention that.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Judge Martinez.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. The area that, of concern to me is requiring the abolishment of the Faculty Senate. Uh, why would, would it, would act, in my, in my opinion, the Faculty Senate, uh, should have some input, uh, to members of the board, obviously, uh, for the benefit of the, of the, of the overall administration in addition to the, uh, teaching of, of the, of the overall program of the college. Why, why are they coming up with the abolishment, particularly more so when, when we, we do listen to, to the, you know, uh, faculty themselves?
That, that's a very good question, Judge, and the reason we have to abolish it is because the membership currently is not in accordance to the Senate, the Senate Bill. In other words, faculty voted on its a hundred percent membership. Under this law, the President gets to appoint one, uh, member, and the rest have to be divided by colleges. Now, Laredo College, we're not divided by College of Science or College of, of Arts, we're divided by divisions. So now the divisions, the workforce education, we have about fourteen departments, the arts and sciences, we have seven departments, and the health sciences, we have seven, well, when I say departments, programs, right? So in essence, it's a two to one to one ratio. So what this is saying is that if we have whatever amount we declare, so it's sixty, we need to have a ratio of two to one to one, like equal representation of each of the divisions. Then it has a, a different definition of how long they can serve, and then how much they have to wait out before they can serve again. So these are new rules that are not in compliance with our current constitution. The other thing is that when there's fifty percent of more members, the, the faculty ha, the, their meetings have to be broadcast live to the public. So everything under this law is all about transparencies, like when it comes to Faculty Senate. This is why we're proposing to call the old one Faculty Senate and the new reconstituted uh, version as Faculty Council. And again, it's not anything that we want to do, it's just, it's a very lengthy detail, um, that requires us basically to restructure it. And that's why they're giving us four months from when we abolish the old version. And in truth, you all then tell us whether you're okay with developing this new council, because technically, the Board of Regions, the Board of Trustees in higher ed institutions can say no. You know, but we're asking as administration to please support the continuation of Faculty Council under now the accordance of this bill.
May I ask, uh, do you feel comfortable with these modifications or these, uh, changes supposedly that are going to improve? Uh, I don't know, in my opinion, but do you feel comfortable with?
Well, Judge, I'd rather not answer that, because then it gets political, right? I'm just here to adhere to the law, and, um, we just have to comply, because again, there are reports that we have to submit by September first and then January first of two thousand twenty-six.
Uh, Jacob, Judge, are you done, Judge? Yeah, Ms. Newsom and then Ms. Elizondo and then Ms. Bella.
Thank you, Judge, I share the same concerns. So I noticed on your PowerPoint, uh, that you, that you had the, the words, I think it was reconstitute and ratify before abolishment. Is there a way that, I mean, so what, I, I just need to understand this, so for what, four months, five months, we, you know, there's not going to be a voice from the Faculty Council now that we're going to call it? Like, I need, I need to know.
Well, you know, you're, as Vice President, the voice of faculty always matters, right? And in every committee that we have, um, in, in our level, from Evaluation Committee to Post Tenure to Procedure Manual, I always involve, um, the faculty and representatives from the Faculty Senate, which I will continue to have because it's very important in the process of developing procedures and, um, you know, manuals, uh, there, there's not anything that we do, and then whenever we develop something, I send an email to faculty, give them about a five-day commentary period, uh, where they can provide input, and then we develop our final processes. So none of that is going to change, other than what we do with, with the naming and the new requirements of what the new Faculty Council has to do.
Dr. Ramirez, you want to add something?
I do. I, I think that it is imperative that we all recognize the importance of the involvement of faculty in everything we do, as much, um, in as much as the students, right? The student voice, the faculty voice, the staff voice. Um, we have been, I think, uh, extremely inclusive in trying to continue to, to get that done. Uh, what we're trying to do today is comply with the law. Um, our day-to-day. Our day-to-day actions are not going to change. How we interact with Faculty and staff and students shouldn't change, even though we're given until January the 1st to reconstitute. And so the timeline we're presenting to you, which was one of the things we, we were strongly in favor of, so that everybody would know, we're not recommending. We as Administration can only recommend to you, the Board. What our hope is, is that we follow the law and that you do give us permission to reconstitute a Faculty Advisory. Now, you don't have to. You can say, you know what, we don't want, we don't want a Faculty Advisory. You're given that authority now according to this new state law. Now.
You're not recommending?
We're not recommending that at all. We, we value the opinions, we value the input, we value, in all of the committees, whether it was strategic plan or master plan that we're still going through, whether it's procedures or new programs, or whatever it is that we're planning or doing, we always include a cross-section of all of our employees, which includes Faculty and staff and students. And, and so ideally, I hope that you all understand that it's, we're not wanting to cut anybody out. The idea is, how do we keep people in and comply with the law? This law also allows us to have up to 60 people involved in the new Faculty Advisory Group. And so that is specified in Senate Bill 37. So our hope is that as soon as possible, we can reconstitute and bring it back to the Board with a recommendation because you're going to have to approve the group as well once we go through the internal process. And the timeline is included in your packet, so you can see how we plan to do this. Ideally, we'd like to have it done as soon as possible. Hopefully, at the next Board meeting, we can fix the policy. And so if you look at the timeline, our hope is to have everything up and running again no later than the November Board meeting, but, you know, we, we're not trying to exclude, I want you all to understand that, we're not, we don't want to leave anybody out. And we certainly don't, don't, I know that Dr. Gill and I have had lengthy conversations about this, and it's not about that.
Ms. Lisondo?
Actually, I have a legal question. Rusty, I know in the past, a couple months ago, we have granted the Faculty Senate, I guess we passed a resolution giving them the authority to present to the Board formal recommendations. What's going to happen to actions prior, taken from this Board, they, about the Faculty Senate? I'm sorry.
Ms. Lisondo and Board members, Rusty Muir for the record, College Attorney. The Senate Bill 37 states that Faculty Senates or, or councils, whatever name you choose to decide, are advisory in nature. The Laredo College Faculty Senate in its current form has been advisory in nature, so that actually won't change at all. There's not going to be any difference at all in that. And as you've seen, there have been resolutions the Board has passed relating to the Faculty Senate. The Faculty Senate is reported through Dr. Gill in the last year or two to the Board. That, there's every expectation that that would continue. And again, I, the issue here is that the, the law says this has to be abolished by September 1. It will be abolished, but unless it complies with Senate Bill 37. So that, that is really, and Dr. DeHirina, Dr. Ramirez have done a very good job at explaining the details of that, but that won't change, Ms. Lisondo, what you had requested.
And before we continue, hold on, Dr. Ramirez, you want to add something?
Yes. One of the things you'll need to remember is that our accrediting body still requires shared governance, and so that cannot change. So as we're working through our fifth-year review report, that shared governance will continue or will be in violation of the creditors.
And if I may, the fact, Senate Bill 37 actually states that shared governance involves the Faculty Senate and Council and will continue.
Ms. Lisondo, are you done?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Bella, then Judge, then Ms. Newsom.
I, Minita kind of answered my question. My concern is, I know that this is not going to change our shared governance at all, which means that our Faculty will participate in pretty much everything that we do. It's just a, it's just a, you're recreating something to fit what they want. Am I correct?
Yeah, the, one of the main differences is the way that, and Dr. DeHirina mentioned this, the way that the Faculty Senate members will be elected and appointed. It's a combination. There's an appointment, appointments made by the College President and then elections that take place for each division. So that's, that's one of the main.
And it really sounds like there's, there's going to be more participation.
There could be up to 60 members.
Yeah, that's a big one.
And, and the Board, there, there are two other items that are dealing with the Faculty Senate. One is a resolution, Dr. Ramirez will talk to you about that, but basically what it says is, you know, the Faculty Senate is being abolished, the Board intends to recreate it, and there will be a timeline adopted. And then the next item is actually the timeline. And you'll see the steps that the next meeting have to go through to get to the creation of the Faculty Council. It's going to involve the Board adopting a new policy that's consistent with Senate Bill 37 and other things.
Judge Martinez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, obviously, I, I agree with Dr. Ramirez's observation, of course, because obviously there has to be some communication, you know, with the Administration as well as with the Faculty and, and the Administration, and in this case, the President of the, of the College. If there has to be some, some changes or some items that obviously need to be addressed, obviously, that is the responsibility of the President and the Administration. My concern is, I hope that, going on to the next item, which is abolishing, all right, the Faculty Senate, that's very strong words. I, I mean, as Administration or the Administrators.
The bill specifically says abolishment. So we're, we're grabbing, we're grabbing from the bill to do our resolution, but then the resolution that we're going to be doing right now in the next item is also saying that we're recommending to reopen the Faculty, but name it in a different name, so we can comply by the bill, Judge.
Go along with that.
Yes. See, so we'll, we'll do, that'll be the next item.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ms. Newsom and then Ms. Benavides Garcia.
Yes, I want to know, so, Mr. Muir, what are we not in compliance with? I know you, you said, I mean, we don't have to abolish it provided that we're in compliance. So what are we not in compliance with?
The main.
That we can't fix by September 1st.
Yeah, the, the main issue is the way that the members of the Faculty Senate are elected and appointed. So, you know, you'd have to, the Board would have to adopt a policy in order to change that. Then there would have to be the Faculty Senate organization that is appointed and elected. There would have to be elections for the divisions. That'll involve coordination between the College President and Faculty Leadership. And then the Faculty, the new Faculty Organization would adopt a new Constitution essentially that would incorporate some of these items. There's some other details about the, the, the reconstitution of it that you have to comply with under Faculty, the Senate Bill 37. But I think that in the timeline, you'll see that unfold. I'm not sure if it's Dr. DeHirina or Dr. Ramirez or both, we'll discuss that with you, but there are steps that you take. So it's step one, step two, step three, step four. That, that is going to be discussed in the next item dealing with the timeline.
Ms. Ramos, you want to add something to that item? No, you're not done, don't, you want to add something?
I just want to add, Ms. Newsom, so, including with this, with these changes, we also need to modify the, the Constitution and the bylaws. So that goes along with it also. Like, it's a complete package, because when we adopted, when the Board adopted the Faculty Senate, or they created the Faculty Senate, it was created with bylaws, and then they have a, a process to get the President every year and to get the Senators. And so that has to change because according to Senate Bill 37, they, they want this, the way it was created to be removed completely and start from scratch. So that's what they're, that's what they're telling us. I mean, it's not like.
See, if we're not in compliance, that's what you said.
Yes, that's pretty much what it is.
I'm still with the question, what, what are we not in, so how, how, Dr. Martinez, how are you all nominated, or how are you?
Yes.
Sorry, I mean.
No, no, thank you. Well, first and foremost, there's, right now, there's too many of us. So our Constitution currently divides Senate, we, we have the Faculty Senate, but we also have the Faculty Assembly. So somewhere around 2015 or so, the Constitution was rewritten. So the way, the way it's set up right now, the Senators attend the meeting, but any Faculty member can also attend a meeting as being part of Faculty Assembly. Once doing so, they have an option to vote and so forth. So right now, we are completely over 60 members. That, that's one way. We're elected in two-year cycles. The Senators are elected in two-year cycles. We have at-large Senators that I don't think this will fit into it. So we're, we're extremely non-incompliance with.
And elected by who?
I'm sorry?
Elected by who?
By the Faculty, the Faculty themselves elect. Every department is in charge of electing their, their Senator. And then we have three at-large positions that are elected by the entire Faculty Assembly. So I don't think we'll be able to have those anymore. Now, it's very specific the way they want to set up these Senates and councils now.
And, and, Mr. Muir, how is that? What are the specificities of that? I do want to know. I mean, or if you could tell me which page, because it's really, really, really small. So I've been having a hard time reading it, but I'm managing, I'm going like this, I'm sure you'll see me.
There are separate sections of Senate Bill 37 is a very dense bill. There is a lot going on there. Tucked in there, besides, well, in, in, Dr. DeHirina went through each area that that bill covers. And so there's three different sections of Senate Bill 37 that are really devoted to Faculty Senate, Faculty Council. There's a section talking about shared governance, and then there's a section about reconstituting the Faculty Senate and so forth. So you'd look at these different sections. There is, for example, one section of Senate Bill 37, it's 51.3522, and that, there's, subsection A, B, and so forth. If you look at B, subsection B, that talks about how they will be elected, how the members will be elected. So it's B, it's, it's 51.3522B3. That's where the limit is, to no more than 60, with two representatives from each college or school. And again, college or school is, those are terms that are typically associated with universities.
Yeah.
In the community colleges, it's something different, divisions. But one member per the college or school is appointed by the President or the Chief Executive Officer of the institution. In this case, Dr. Ramirez would make that appointment. And then the remaining members are elected by a vote of the Faculty of the members respective college or school. So you would take, say, I'm just going to call it Division 1, there's three divisions, Division 1, 2, 3. So a Division 1 faculty members of that division would elect the members to the, to the Faculty Senate. And as Dr. Gill was mentioning, the Constitution that's currently in existence doesn't provide for those things. It, it's a different setup altogether. And so I think when you step back and look at Faculty, it works, Senate Bill 37, the Legislature has given a four-month window to address all of these things, and these things are a bit time-consuming. And, and again, that, that'll be an item that comes up, it's a second item from this one, that will review the timeline. You know, could you speed up the timeline? I think it's, it's something that you all could look at, but Dr. DeHirina could, could address that with you. And, and so that's one of them. You, section 51.3522 has other subsections. Subsection C states that the Faculty Council or Senate is advisory only. It may not be delegated the final decision-making authority on any matter. And as Dr. Ramirez mentioned, that's not an issue here because we've never had that. But, you know, again, this bill is very dense and does cover a lot of areas. We spoke about it in some detail in the, in the meeting.
Let's try to speed up. Ms. Benavides Garcia, go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to be clear on something, right? So this Senate Bill 37, if we don't comply with this, they, no, I know, but if we don't, they will not recognize the Faculty Senate anymore after September 1st.
And, and, and the right way to say it, that's exactly right. But, but when you look at the law, what the law says is Faculty Senates are abolished on September 1, 2025.
Whether we decide to or not.
If they're not compliant with Senate Bill 37.
Unless it's in compliance, which you all are telling us that is a lengthy process in which, what they have right now to what they need to have in accordance with this bill.
That's right.
Right? But that's what I, I just want to make that clear, that if we say no, it doesn't matter, September 1st, if they haven't changed a thing, there will not be anything.
That's right.
Because that's what the law says. You know what I'm saying? But, no, but that, that, is that, is that, am I reading it correctly?
100%.
Okay.
And, and just to note, because we have.
We can't break the law, we're not going to do that.
No, but, but no, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah.
But. We need to move, yeah, we need to move on this item. Yeah, just, just to, just to sum it up, because I'm going to call for the question, it's important that we understand as Board members that we need to, if we're going to want to do it the right way, we need to approve the abolishment, which is right now, and then the next items will be telling us, because the recommendation from staff is not abolishing it 100% and not giving us a recommendation of saying, we don't want a, a committee or a Senate or a organization. So I think it's important because if we do not vote on it and we do not approve, it's, then we're just putting more time that we're going to be spending on that, on that timeline. So we, it's important that we vote on it right now. So, yes, Mr.
And, and Mr. President, if I can, on this agenda item, 9D, right? The real action items are the next ones, 9E.
Yes.
So I don't think you really need to vote on 9D. Now, it does talk about action as needed relating to these two policies, BGC Local and BD Regulation, and that's just because they're policies that will have to be modified.
But they're going to bring it back.
That's right, sir. And that's on the timeline.
Okay.
So we don't have to.
Not on this one.
Okay, last, last comment, Ms. Leendo?
Just real quick, I just want to say that there was nothing to comply with before because the bill didn't exist.
Yes.
So when, once the bill was passed, now we have to comply with it.
Makes sense.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to move on with 9E. We're, we're, so as, as Legal Counsel mentioned, we do not have to make a motion for this one, so we're going to go ahead and go with 9E, adopt a resolution abolishing the Faculty Senate in accordance with mandate of Texas, Texas Senate Bill 37. And I'm going to call on Dr. Ramirez and Ms. Ramos for this.
So Ms. Ramos has the resolution, and Staff and Administration recommends that Laredo College Board of Trustees adopt a resolution abolishing the Faculty Senate in accordance with the mandates of Texas Senate Bill 37. In June of 2025, the.
In June of 2025, the 89th Texas Legislature enacted Senate Bill 37, which mandates the restructuring of faculty governance organizations at public institutions of higher education across Texas. And effective September 1, 2025, the bill prohibits the continuation of Faculty Senates in their current form and instead requires institutions to establish a new advisory-only faculty body with membership and governance criteria strictly defined by this law. I now defer to Ms. Ramos to read the referender, sorry, the resolution.
Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, ma'am. The resolution of Laredo College Board of Trustees regarding compliance with Texas Senate Bill 37 and the abolishment of the existing Faculty Senate. Whereas the 89th Texas Legislature enacted Texas Senate Bill 37, Senate Bill 37, amending Chapter 51 of the Texas Education Code to add Section 51.3522, Section 51.3522 governing the establishment and recognition of Faculty Senates and similar representative bodies at public institutions of higher education in Texas. Whereas Senate Bill 37 provides that only the governing body, governing board of a public institution of higher education may establish a Faculty Senate. Whereas under Section 51.3522, any such faculty body must be established pursuant to a policy adopted by the institution's governing board, which sets forth procedures for the selection of members and the scope of the body's representative authority. Whereas Senate Bill 37 further provides that any existing Faculty Senate or similar body not created pursuant to Section 51.3522 and not ratified by the governing board by September the 1st, 2025, shall be abolished as a matter of law. Whereas the current Faculty Senate at Laredo College was not created pursuant to a policy adopted under Section 51.3522 and does not meet the requirements of any such policy currently in effect. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Laredo College, also referred to as the Board, desires to reconstitute a faculty representative body in accordance with the requirements of Senate Bill 37 and establish a timeline for accomplishing the same. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College that, number one, the Board finds that the existing Faculty Senate was not established in compliance with the provisions of Section 51.3522 of the Texas Education Code set to become effective on September the 1st, 2025, and does not meet the requirements of any policy adopted by the Board pursuant to that section. Number two, in accordance with Senate Bill 37, the existing Faculty Senate shall be abolished effective September 1st, 2025. Number three, the Board will adopt a formal policy under Section 51.3522 to govern the future establishment of a representative faculty body to be known as the Faculty Council, consistent with state law and the best interests of Laredo College. Number four, the Board will adopt a timeline for the formation of a Faculty Council. And number five, the administration is directed to prepare and present a proposed policy for the Board's consideration addressing the formation, structure, selection procedures, and responsibilities of the future Faculty Council in accordance with the requirements of Section 51.3522, approved and adopted by the Board of Trustees of Laredo College on this 30th day of July, 2025. I make my motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay, there is a motion by Ms. Ramos. There's a second by Ms. Bella and Ms. Garcia. I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now the timeline. 9F, approve a timeline for the creation of a Faculty Council pursuant to Texas Senate Bill 37, including dates to adopt a Board policy that incorporates requirements of Senate Bill 37, appoint members, and establish an effective date. I call on Dr. Ramirez to give us this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The staff recommends that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve a timeline for the creation of a Faculty Council as required by Texas Senate Bill 37. Texas Senate Bill 37, signed into law in June of 2025 and effective September 1 of 2025, requires public higher education institutions to abolish existing Faculty Senates and establish new advisory Faculty Councils that conform to specific legislative mandates. To meet the statutory deadlines and ensure a smooth transition, an implementation timeline must be established and approved by the Board. The timeline will serve as a framework for phasing out the existing Faculty Senate, developing a compliant Board policy, and appointing and convening the new Faculty Council before Senate Bill 37's effective date. Add to your agenda, we are recommending certain dates be complied by. And would you like me to read all of the dates, or do you all have them in front of you?
No, that's it?
Well, I'm strongly recommending that we adopt our timeline, or that you adopt our timeline.
I move that we approve a timeline for the creation of the Faculty Council.
I second.
There's a motion by Ms. Leando. There's a second by Ms. Bella. Any other comments? No? I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No? Motion passes. Thank you. So we're moving on to executive session. I'm going to yield it to Ms. Ramos. Go ahead and read the executive session item.
Yes, sir. Executive Session 10A is meeting with the Laredo College President and Laredo College Attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 and 551.071 to discuss a recommendation for a reduction in force due to a program change resulting from a termination or curtailment in federal and state government funding sources. 10B, close session meeting pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.074 to discuss with the Laredo College President and Laredo College Attorney legal issues related to delegation of authority to the college president to conduct reductions in force when federal or state grant funding is terminated or curtailed and discuss modifying Laredo College Board Policy, DMC Local, termination of employment, reduction in force to enable the delegation. 10C, discussion to review the Board's self-evaluation results as required by Board Policy, VCG Local, Board Internal Organization, Board Evaluation, and by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, SAC COC. Principles of Accreditation, Close Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. I make a motion to go into executive session.
There's a motion by Ms. Ramos. There's a second by Ms. Bella. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? No? Thank you. We will be going to executive session, and it's approximately 7:40. Thank you.
...
Good afternoon. Uh, good evening. It is approximately eight thirty-four. No action was taken in executive session. So I'm gonna move forward with item eleven, discussion and possible action. Eleven A, approval of recommendation for a reduction enforced due to the program change,